It's September the ninth, Monday, and we will call this meeting to order. Oh, I'm sorry, seven o'clock, 7:00 PM. And if you would all stand with place, please.
By the way, introduced by the United States of America. And to the Republic over which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, Lord, please look over council this evening and allow them to make the decisions necessary for the city for the benefit of citizens. Please keep everyone safe in the city. Look over everybody. Keep us all happy. In your thoughts, we shall say good pray.
Row phone, please. Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mr. Clement?
Sonic?
Here.
Mr. Duffy? Hope you're late.
Yes, this is quiet.
Mr. Flowers? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
I'd like a motion, please, to excuse Mr. Clement and Mr. Flowers.
So moved. So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Minutes from the last meeting? And the special, oh, I'm sorry, and the special meeting.
Move to the dot. Second.
Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to citizens' comments. Anyone has anything to say?
Oh, that keyboard, you just pick the keyboard up instead of the chair.
You're not gonna do anything? Are you sure?
Well, no, no, not that way. Sorry, sorry, throw it on.
I can throw that every life.
I was embarrassed myself.
I'm just glad you didn't throw that.
I told Jason Cohen that after the credit bills, I would come to see the council because he did a really wonderful thing. My husband loves fish sandwiches. And so I was there first thing when that fish truck was open. But they had problems with the water. And then I was sitting waiting and they thought, well, maybe they get it and nothing happened. And then the guy from the French fry truck came over and said, we can't get any water either. So I texted Jason. Five to seven minutes later, he's there fixing the problem so that they can attach their closes and everything into the hydrants. Now that's service and I was very pleased to see that. And that's exceptionally commendable and it's nice to know that things can happen that well. So that is my good thing to say about the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, any business and organizational comments tonight? There are not? No. Okay, then, well, excuse me, we'll get right to it. Committee discussions, anyone? Jason's not here.
She's gonna speak.
In regards to...
I was gonna speak during the citizens' comment.
I apologize.
You wrote through it so quickly, I didn't get a chance.
I apologize. Please do so. Could you take a podium, please?
Right away. What I wanted to speak on was the the last council meeting when you all approved the work on canal stream to be done. And you said that it would only cost $2 million and that it was covered by D O T, 100%. And I asked repeatedly, how much is our cost? And I was told, well, everyone was told who was here, oh, it's just a little bit, it's like, nothing really, it's not a big deal. So since I couldn't get a straight answer, I went and got the exhibit that has a preliminary legislation, which is basically the contract from DOT saying, this is what we're gonna do for you and this is what you're responsible for. So I was surprised, obviously, when I go to the funding and payment and it says the total cost for project is estimated, estimated, at almost $3 million, not a total of two, three, for which DOT will provide $2 million. And any costs that exceed the $2 million that they are gonna give us comes out of the city. And the reason I felt the need to come forward and speak of this is because the citizens need to know. Because when y'all presented it, it was a totally different thing. And they need to know the actual cost. And I know, in my experience, there has not been a single construction plan or project that has ever come under cost or under the projected cost. They're always over, always over, because there's always things that pop up that you weren't expecting, that maybe wasn't in the plan, so it wasn't covered. All of that kind of stuff, we as citizens will be responsible to pay.
May I, I'm sorry, may I ask Mr. Bets to comment on this?
No, yes, I was hoping to ask him, but I didn't have his number, so I'm glad he's here.
Yes, you have to, I didn't prepare for this, I don't have the exact numbers for y'all. The project is between $3 and $3.2 million. ODOT is funding $2 million of it. We applied for and received an Ohio Public Works grant last year, it's $400,000 grant. I wanna say $167,000 in zero percent interest loan for 20 years. There's a $96,000 RTPO, and don't ask me what that stands for, it's something Buckeye Hills committed to help improve the design. And then there's a $200,000 additional RTPO that we got in the second round. With that said, that leaves about $400,000 that's coming from the city, rough numbers. And all I can say to that is those were projections moving forward through the project and they've accounted for that and had that budget for the project, so.
I do have a question on the same project.
Sure.
As I read through it, it stated clearly that consultants would need to be hired, I mean, than the consultant.
I'm a yes, that's us.
Okay, and are you on the approved list for DOT? Because it clearly says here, it can only be on that list of approved.
Yes, we are, D O T is. And the city went through the qualification base selection process, that's turning inside the revised code section for you, but for revised code, we have to go through a qualification base selection process. ODOT actually administered that, D O T was chosen. So we've got all these boxes checked.
That's good. So you are gonna be the, the L P A, I'm assuming?
That's the city.
Right.
The city's the L P A. Actually, D O T's involvement is wrapping up, we've delivered the final plans. ODOT will actually sell the project, they're word for bidding it, and they will hire another consultant to oversee the construction of it.
Right.
So that's where we're at right now.
Okay, so, and I did read that in there. So this consultant that is gonna be hired by DOT is also gonna be our responsibility to pay.
Yeah, well, actually, the grant pays up to $2 million and that includes engineering or instruction, they call it. So that's, those numbers I rattled off encompassing all of it.
Okay, well, good. The other question I had as reading through here, they're very clear, I mean, anytime you work with a state entity, they're very clear and very specific on how they want things done. And they basically have said, you have to follow exactly what we tell you, step by step. If, for some reason, you don't do it, for whatever reason, they reserve the right to move from this project into a future cell, into a future year, maybe coming back and trying it. But if we do not adhere to the established project schedule, regardless of any funding commitments, they will withdraw. And we don't get any of the money that we've paid, because according to this, if I'm reading it correctly, which I feel like I am, it also says that the city has to pay first and then submit all the paperwork and then we get reimbursed.
But also said.
Yes, it does. So my question is, has council taken the time to figure out if the city can afford this? And if, for some reason, it doesn't go through because we failed somewhere along the way of the, I don't know how many steps they have, can we afford to absorb that cost?
Mr. Taylor is not here tonight and he should be the one to answer that, and I apologize for having a better answer.
No, I understand that, but since y'all passed that last time that we met, I assumed that all of you were aware of what it takes and not just signed off on it because you decided, hey, this is what we're gonna do.
We had the exhibition sent, council exhibition, exhibit sent to us.
Okay.
So yes, we were aware.
That's good. So then my last question is, why did y'all lie at the last meeting when I specifically asked, how much is this actually gonna cost us?
I don't know who spoke.
Devin spoke and Clement spoke. And the only thing they could tell me was, oh, it's not gonna be much, you know, a little bit. And Clement finally said, you know, it's an exhibit A, so I got exhibit A, and that is what I found out. You know, as much as you guys talk about transparency and how much you accuse others of not having...
Are you finished, Rita?
No, I'm not quite.
Well, please, Clement.
I am, I'm getting down. As much as you all talk about transparency and accuse others of not being transparent, transparency means no lies, it means being honest, speaking the truth. And you can look that up in the dictionary, because that is basically what it says. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else for you to speak? Okay, we will move on to committee discussion, I'm sorry, business and organization.
Secretary of State, you didn't have any for that.
None, okay. Corey? Anything? Committee discussion, do we have anything, Department of Defense, Department?
I believe that's for council, yes.
Right. For our committees, I don't think any committees.
Okay, you're right, okay. Okay, department updates?
Okay, my, I didn't see anything.
Okay, no problem. Tonight, we're not going to discuss floodplain because this was supposed to have been turned in at an earlier date. I cannot give you a reason of why it was not. I am just here as a helper for the committee and sometimes I don't even know what's going on. So with that said, Jonathan, do you have anything you'd like to say tonight, sir?
I don't have anything for the Department of Law update, I was preparing a presentation, but since...
I don't remember, should I draw it?
Please quiet.
Will council permission push that to the following meeting?
That's fine, she was asking if you have any comments regarding the, the floodplain mess.
Oh, no, I, oh, don't, I had circulated a lot back, the changes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. I circulated the changes relative to the existing code language, so there's, I would not characterize those substantial changes, but they are required to stay compliant, so my recognition is that they are adopted.
This is first reading for that?
No.
This is second reading?
Yes.
It's a, it's a second reading, but it does need to be passed under the statute of rules because it needs to be in play December 26th, February. Yeah, I remember that, that's the discussion.
And Jonathan, would you like to speak on the Riverside Drive pedestrian traffic?
Yes, so, so my understanding is that the, well, here's the problem.
Who's ever heard that, it's been requested on, oh, it's my fault, I apologize, I apologize, I'm so sorry.
And if they don't hold someone to come pick them up and take them home, obviously, they don't have a vehicle at the jail, so then they would just wind up walking down Riverside Drive. And my understanding, from what, oh, excuse me, what's been indicated to me is there are citizens who are concerned about the safety issue that that poses to the residents in and around that area. I have had discussions with the police chief about what actions, appropriate actions council could take to alleviate this problem. Obviously, it would require some work with the jail and coordinating. One of the police chief's ideas was to try to coordinate with the jail to get people bus rides out of town. It hasn't really progressed, that's where it stands right now, and of course, Jonathan, please feel free to jump in with anything that I'm missing, but I think it's a work in progress, it will require a little bit of delicate handling just because we're dealing with the jail, but I'm hopeful that we can come to a good resolution that meets the needs and security of the residents.
Well, here's the problem, it's been a work in process with the jail for 20 years. Yes, here recently, they released someone who was still high on PCP, who threw the guy's chair through his front window and caused $50,000 worth of damage and called the police on himself. I'm tired of waiting on their work in process, I want action, yeah.
Next to the college.
Yeah.
And we see him all the time over campus.
And you guys donate, you guys offered to have a ride share program with one of your vehicles and there was nothing, nobody wanted any part of it. Yep, so, yep, so that's the problem, it's been a work in process. And former chief, Bitch, talked about how these folks would get released from jail with no ride and they would know where to take, where in town to go to go get drugs or anything else in there. They, I'm ready for action, so whether we have to force the action or what, I'm ready to make this happen. Oh, honestly, what needs to happen is, is the county commissioners that make, set the rules for the jail need to be held responsible. Because if this was happening in the great city of Athens, this would be a non-starter. This would be, the discussion would be over, about the first time they walked on Ohio University campus. Or about the first time they walked up to their door and beat on the door. This guy's just lucky he didn't walk to the wrong house. So, I think next week, committee meeting, I want to introduce legislation to close the pedestrian traffic. And we'll let, we'll let the jail see if they can sue and figure it out, maybe they'll fix their problem.
Can I ask a question? Is there a law or something that these people being released can't be released until they have?
Oh, no, they made that abundantly clear.
There's no law, they said that, they open the door and they're gone.
They hold no responsibility, as soon as they get released by the judge at their, by video conference, as soon as they're really, they're free to go.
We saw them released with no shoes in the middle of winter.
Oh, absolutely, I've seen it, they walked right past my house.
Well, I know we've had this for years and years.
I've met with those people before and during my time on council. They don't care. I think I want to make them care.
The problem is that the regional jail serves on five different counties.
Five counties, that's great, okay, I'm tired screwing around with them. And the problem is, 65%, I'll bet you 65% of our calls are due to the profits or due to jail releases. It's been that way for years.
Would you agree, Devin?
I don't have for sure numbers on that.
I'm just taking a guess, but it's a lot.
Wow.
There's at least enough, yeah. So Jonathan, one day next week, would you be available if I could schedule a meeting with the board and probably the legal counsel, too?
You might want to include Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, I'm not sure who their legal counsel is, I think there may have been a recent change, I'll look into that, but yeah, if you could set that up, just send me a calendar, please.
Yep, I can do it.
Have a county commissioner at least.
They're on the board.
They have a board with one commissioner from each county.
One commissioner. Did any of the other counties?
Nobody picks up their people, nobody. Well, that would say bring them here. Yeah. They drop them off. They get rid of their problem.
They don't care.
Yeah, it's our problem now.
Any further?
But their kids have to get down there.
So if they're from other counties, the bus could take them back to their county immediately.
They could take them to Columbus for all I care.
No, I mean, that's a choice that the regional council makes.
We were all raised as children to pick up our things after we're done. Same thing goes with your criminals, if you drop off in our community, they kill you.
Anyone else?
Get on my side, Bob.
Yes.
Sorry.
Nobody can make that work. You have that too.
All right, we're going to go to second readings on the ordinance, please, if I may have someone. 5524.
An ordinance abolishing and repealing Chapter 152 of the Nelsonville City Code and making updated flood damage regulations and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city's existing flood damage regulations are set forth in Chapter 152 of the Nelsonville City Code. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and the Ohio Department of National Resources, ODNR, propose to require changes to local flood damage regulations. Whereas special flood hazard areas exist within the city that are subject to periodic inundation, which may result in loss of life and property, health and safety hazard, disruptions of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood protection and relief, and impairment of the tax base. Whereas it is necessary for Nelsonville local flood damage to continue to remain in full compliance with applicable FEMA and ODNR regulations to protect private property and to avoid impairment of tax base. Whereas it is necessary for the city to enact updated flood damage regulations by September 2024 to ensure that the city's flood damage regulations remain in compliance with FEMA and ODNR regulations. Now therefore, being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Chapter 152 of Nelsonville City Code is hereby abolished. The flood damage regulations attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference are hereby adopted by city council as the Nelsonville Flood Damage Regulation. The Nelsonville Flood Damage Regulation shall be codified in a new Chapter 152 of the Nelsonville City Code. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public to full compliance with applicable requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of September 2024.
So that one should be under suspension?
Okay. Second one, please? Yes, second one. Yes. The second? Second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
I have a question, if I can.
I'm sorry, no.
I understand that, I was just gonna ask, when is the updated correct map gonna be available for the floodplains?
It's currently available on the FEMA website, I can't remember the, it's somewhat difficult to get to, but it is on there, itchy.
And that's the correct one?
Yes, it's underneath.
All I can find is O9.
Correct, so I viewed them, maybe two or three weeks ago. They are under, I can't remember the title of them. I think they're under the proposed maps, is what the title of them is.
Can you maybe put it link out, so that people get to?
I think they are.
Did you put it out?
Yeah, I just don't know if they're...
The link that was on tonight's meeting. Now, it's citizens' comment. And I apologize, I'm sorry. Okay, council? Council, I need to move it on.
Yep.
Question taken.
So moved. Second.
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Ordinance 6224.
An ordinance adopting a trenching and excavation safety policy for the utility department. Whereas the Ohio Department of Workers' Compensation, Public Employment Risk Reduction Program, or PERF, requires that the city adopt a trenching and excavation safety policy to ensure safe operations and practices in the utility department. Whereas in 2003, the city was cited by PERF for unsafe operations and practices. Whereas the acting city manager has developed a trenching and excavation safety policy, which has been approved by PERF. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City council adopts trenching and excavation safety policy for the utility department of the city of Nelsonville, attached here to as Exhibit 1, and which is incorporated herein by reference. The acting city manager, city manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby directed and authorized to take all steps necessary to mitigate and remediate the city's PERF citation from 2023. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of September 2024.
Please take off.
So moved. Second.
Call them, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ordinance 6924.
An ordinance authorizing application for acceptance of an entry into an Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for design of the Phase 5 sewer project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to sign the Phase 5 sewer project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for an Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund loan to finance the design of the project. Whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authority to pass legislation for application of a loan and the execution of an agreement, as well as designating a dedicated repayment source. Whereas the call for nominations is anticipated for on August 12, 2024, and nominations will be due 30 days thereafter. Whereas the maximum grant award for Phase 5 sewer project is $4 million. Now therefore, be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The Nelsonville City Council finds it is necessary to... The Nelsonville City Council finds it is necessary to complete the Phase Five Sewer Project for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. Council also finds it is necessary to apply for a design loan from the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. The acting, the city manager, acting city manager and or police chief of the city of Nelsonville shall be and hereby is authorized to request from the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund financing required to complete the design for the Phase Five Project. The targeted cost, project cost shall be four million dollars. The payment of money's loan from the Ohio EPA WPCLF shall be paid out of wastewater revenues generated from Nelsonville wastewater customers. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
I believe we've discussed this before, but does anyone have anything to say about this? Yes.
Is this part of the most recent sewage system out towards Domeville, or is this a separate entity some other place?
Mr. Vads?
Yes, um, right now the project's in development, the project's still refinancing it. The city's identified a couple unsuited areas within the city limits. Um, on Wind Road, there's five, six houses that are currently not on sewer, so we've had that in. I advised or recommended that the city include, um, some of those areas to to document health risks. That's how we've been successful in securing EPA grant funding over the last several years. The other area is on Critchfield Drive. There's four or five houses up there that are all in sewer. Mr. Pollard and I met with the administration or the staff, I should say. And we kind of got a wish list of pump stations to fix up that have not been addressed, uh, over the years and, um, from there, quite honestly, we're still working on the rest. Uh, Mr. Cohen had contracted a, uh, televising company that he uses to TV the sewers, so we can get a handle on the condition of Chestnut Street sewers. And, uh, we're still looking at that. I hope to get my hands on that tomorrow and we'll piece this thing together with a four million dollar target. Uh, they're due September eighteenth. Now that thing came out, we know the due date.
Council?
Should we pass it under suspension so it can go immediately?
Do you guys want to talk?
I have a question. And maybe Mike's answer. Is there any grant money that could be obtained for this, if it's a four million dollar project?
That, so the the goal is to, uh, secure all grant money for it. Their their maximum grants, four million through the EPA.
Right.
So this is phase five. We've, uh, been successful, one through four. Um, the first three, we got three million in grant each time, and then the phase four project, we got four million in grant. Uh, it actually came in underbid and well, we didn't get the full use of that, but that's why we're trying to target right under four million. So if we're fortunate enough to score well, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, um, we've been extremely, uh, fortunate in our pursuit to this grant money through the state EPA. Um, roughly twelve to fifteen communities across the state get this money and they get hundreds and hundreds of applications. Now, we've had the need, the need's been there, you know, some of these unsuited areas. Regionalization was the big driver. When we built the regional sewer plant, the funding agencies really support that and, uh, influx the grant money to the city, but, uh, I keep saying it, but we keep, uh, we just got phase three water funded grant loans, so. Uh, but this would, our goal is to be all grant.
Well, this says, uh, to apply for a loan fund agreement.
Yeah.
Is that a zero or two percent or?
Well, the city currently qualifies for zero, but they call it this, and the whole program is set up as a loan fund, and they don't even call it grant. They call it principal forgiveness. So the way all the contract, uh, language is written is that you take a loan, but the principal's forgiven. You don't pay.
Do you want, if you want to do an emergency, then I'll have to use the emergency language?
Yes. Both will suspend.
Well, come on. Uh, let's see. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Good.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Push to down. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Take it at seventy, it doesn't matter.
More than?
Seventy, the next one. We don't want to do it. Say we just want to call it out, and then I'll move the table.
Okay, ordinance seventy, twenty-four.
I'd like to move table this ordinance, please. Second.
Uh, Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Do you want to table this next one?
I know that sinkhole repair, I'm pretty sure we had the number last.
I thought we did, too, and I can't.
I thought it was handwritten in on the last one, because I think we got it. But it was around, I know it was around twenty-five thousand because we had it in street funds. I was trying to text the auditor and he didn't know it handed.
Hey, Jonathan. Pass out. Yeah, do you recall the appropriation now for the Fort Street sinkhole repair?
I do not. In fact, I don't know if I actually got one from the auditor. Um, but I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head.
It was discussed last meeting and everything because it was right in.
Yeah, I thought it was written in, handwritten in there. Because I think we got it at the meeting.
Well, I think I have to have it.
That, that's right, that's right. I remember now. Yeah, that's correct. I knew I hadn't typed it in.
I know. But this.
I don't seem to think he's got the amount now.
I, I think I got the amount, but not the truck. I just had to go out and get it.
That's fine, do you?
Of course, the auditor. Or he texted, he emailed like five points. That said he would reveal.
Do you want to let him do that and we've got?
Yeah. Can we just, um, can we just motion to move, uh, ordinance seventy-one, twenty-four to the end of second readings? Probably table and then untable. I'm going to be table that motion, does that work? Second.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Ordinance seventy-two, twenty-four. And ordinance approving, approving a memorandum of understanding, clarifying certain language in the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nelsonville and the Fraternal Order of Police Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for covered members of the Nelsonville Police Department and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has recently entered into a collective bargaining agreement for covered members of the Nelsonville Police Department for the period January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Whereas certain language in the collective bargaining agreement needs to be clarified. Whereas the city desires to enter into a memorandum of understanding to clarify the certain language in the collective bargaining agreement. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City council hereby approves the memorandum of understanding attached hereto as exhibit one and incorporated herein by reference, which clarifies certain language in the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nelsonville and the Fraternal Order of Police Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for covered members of the Nelsonville Police Department, to which the parties previously agreed. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized to sign the M O E on behalf of the city. Council hereby finds and determines that all former actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and in all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to mature clarity of provisions of the collecting, collective bargaining agreement for the police department so that the city can continue to provide police services and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
O T C ten? You have the second reading.
Move to it, Doc. So moved.
I get to ask a question now.
Okay, uh, questions?
Yes. Can somebody, or can you clarify what it specifically is in the contract that?
Yeah, I can. So the issue is, um, the language was a little bit vague as it related to, um, the timeframe it takes for an employee to move from step one to two and then from step two to three. So the way the contract was originally written is officers are on step one when they're hired and then move to step two once they complete their F P O period, however long that may be. So upon completion of that period, they're now step two. Um, the city's interpretation was that you would then have to wait two years to move to step three, and the original intent of everyone involved in negotiations was that um, there would only be one year, one additional year for them to move to step two to step three.
So it's down from two years to one year?
Yeah.
Is that acceptable with everybody?
We'll find out in a minute.
Well, it moves your pay schedule on that much quicker.
Then we're already tight. Council? Eighteen, seven? Okay. Okay. Question taken down. So we got all that. Okay, well, come on. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Hey, we have ordinance. Table looking at the second reading.
Yeah, he's got, he's got to go to the truck and get stuff.
Oh, I apologize.
What do you want to get? Get these two, though.
Next two. So we break it back at the end of this ordinance. It's supposed to get through three.
I'll find out. An old man. I'll just bounce again. Hopefully I bounce good, though.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have an update on the FEMA map if you, while we're waiting.
Absolutely.
So the link that was originally given to us, um, it actually did work on my computer. I think the issue I had was, uh, I tried to look it up on my phone the last time. The link for the new FEMA maps, uh, are M S C.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
M S C dot FEMA dot gov. And then there will, it'll say FEMA Flood Map Service Center. Search all products. Under jurisdiction, put Ohio for the state, Athens County, and then Nelsonville City of for the community. And then it'll bring up everything, uh, for the city of Nelsonville. And then there's, uh, some folders underneath there. So there's one, two. Appears to be three different folders that you can open. If you go to firm panels, there's five entries, and these are the new maps, uh, effective September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Um, the, and there's five entries there told. So the biggest one, which is the very bottom on the last one, is seventy-three megabytes. That's the big map, but it's, it comes up really small.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Madam Vice, Madam President, sorry, I'd like to move to, uh, table seventy-one, twenty-four, please.
That'll be it.
Second. Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonne?
Yes.
Yes.
And ordinance to appropriate funding for Fort Street Sinkhole Repair. Whereas the sinkhole had developed on Fort Street, which causes a clear and present danger to the safety of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. Whereas it is necessary to repair the sinkhole as soon as possible and therefore or council must authorize prompt and immediate funding for the repair project. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Funds shall be appropriated for immediate and thorough repair of the sinkhole on Fort Street. Funds necessary for the repair is in the amount of three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy cents. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary under law to arrange for appropriations of the funds and payment of the same. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to suspend, to dispense with the two readings of this order. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five.
Gentlemen. You got it figured out down there?
Working on it.
Working on it because.
She is reading.
Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this order. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the contract must be awarded immediately to ensure timely completion of the project necessary to the provision of public utilities within the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do you agree, acted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules until, well, under suspension of the rules the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four?
Susan, would you read that amount again?
Three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy cents.
I can't believe that was only a three thousand dollar.
That's like twenty-five thousand, you know, that's. Never heard thrown out.
Yeah.
This is, I think, just an appropriation for, we already have money in the street fund that they.
We had to cover. Move to suspend.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Move to it, Doc. Second.
Uh, and Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Taylor? Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
This will be the first reading of the following ordinance, is ordinance seventy-three twenty-four.
I'll introduce it.
And ordinance approving change order five for Nelsonville Water System Improvements Phase Two Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended to compensate the project contractor for numerous unknown conditions encountered during the project. Whereas numerous unknown conditions encountered include installing a four-inch connection to the old Kroger building, identifying unknown line location, lost time associated with connection, dealing with storm tunnels that were not known to be in the area, establishing new connections and extending existing connections to avoid the need, uh, for future repaving of certain city streets after the streets are repaved in two thousand twenty-five. Whereas this will be change order five for the project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by sixty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Whereas funds to cover the increase will be drawn from the contingency portion of the project funding in which there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby approves change order five for the Nelsonville Water System Improvements Phase Two Project as described more particularly in Exhibit One, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as is fully rewritten within. The contract price shall be increased by the sum of sixty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents to address numerous unknown conditions encountered during the project. The city manager, acting city manager and or police chief shall have authority to enter into accept and or authorize the change order five for the project. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was enacted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rule was hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government. As a change order must be approved immediately to ensure timely and efficient completion of Phase Two Water Project, which project is necessary to the provision of public utilities within the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do you agree, acted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four? Any sentence comments? Counsel? Motion to suspend.
I'll second that motion.
Um, Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Move to it, Doc. I'll second that.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-four twenty-four.
I'll introduce it.
And ordinance approving change order six for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended to cover delivery of an individual grinder pump for wood lane drive, which is necessary to complete the project. Whereas this will be change order six for the project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by eight thousand two hundred three dollars and eighty cents. Whereas the funds to cover the increase will be drawn from the continued support of the project funding in which there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city council hereby approves change order six for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project as described more particularly in Exhibit One, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as is fully rewritten within. The contract price shall increase by the sum of eight thousand two hundred three dollars and eighty cents to cover delivery of an individual grinder pump for wood lane drive. City manager, acting city manager and or police chief shall have the authority to enter into accept and or authorize the change order six for the project. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was enacted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance hereby, is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter Section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the change order must be approved immediately to ensure timely and efficient completion of project of the Phase Three Sewer Project, which project is necessary to the provision of public utilities within the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do you agree, acted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four? Anything on the waters?
Good. Just, just to be clear, is this, this is the sewer system again? It's called water treatment, but?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's basically paid for now, isn't it?
It's not enough the contingency fund from the project, not yet. So it's all, it's all been funded already, right?
Yes, yes, it has. This, and this amount is included in, this was phase three of the sewer project. We're getting ready to wrap it up. And this project's been going on for two or three years. We actually extended it to finish up some of the additional work of the list nation over here. There was a grinder pump that was, uh, a customer, pitch customer had requested it be installed on wood lane, and there's no right of way to get to the individual's house. The contractor purchased it. Um, Jason said the city could use the equipment, just turn it over. Be a change order, we'll pay for it and take it out in the stands. What this one's for.
Is this the last and final grinder pump?
Yes, well, this is the last change order for this project. We'll be closing it out, um, for Phase Three Regional Collection System.
And then, so this, but this, we've got several grinder pumps on that phase, did we not?
Oh, yes.
And are they all hooked up and, and, uh, I know they had to get like connected and, and inspected and stuff?
You know, I, I would pose that question over to the billing office. They, they handle that from there and, uh, I would pose that question there.
Okay.
I don't know if that's.
All right, thank you.
Motion to suspend.
So moved. Second.
Doc? Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Paul Coe? Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Would someone introduce ordinance seventy-five twenty-four, please?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four appropriations ordinance. Whereas the twenty twenty-four appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of five thousand dollars to the general fund number one hundred I nine one zero zero dash one zero zero dash five zero zero one two repairs and maintenance need appropriate a police department is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The twenty twenty-four appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance with following fund. Appropriations in the sum of five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred in line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash five zero zero one two repairs and maintenance vehicle. The total appropriation, I'm sorry, the total unappropriated balance is increased by set amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by set amount. City auditor hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point one one of the Nelsonville City Charter as the ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses. Do you agree, acted by council on second reading the twenty-third day of, uh, September two thousand twenty-four? Sentence comments?
Devon, would you please explain to the audience why this is necessary?
Yeah, so there was a city vehicle that belonged to the police department. It was scheduled for repairs in the amount of five thousand dollars. And then after the fact of getting repaired, it was given to the police department. So then the cost of the repairs were deducted from my vehicle maintenance line item. Probably about a week after that, the vehicle was given to the sewer department.
Remember the little redness, ten, the code enforcement officer used to drive around in nineteen ninety-four? That's what they spent the money on.
How did that happen?
That thing should be going out to pasture a long time ago.
Is it?
No, we just spent five thousand dollars on a fix.
Excuse me, excuse me. How did that happen?
And I was the city manager.
I just, um, just, uh, I don't know if we should be discussing that right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Special counsel. Looking.
My bad.
Nope, no, you're right.
All right. So that's for first reading.
No, no, first reading.
Oh, okay, two reading.
For the two reading ones.
Okay. I apologize, everybody.
You're good, you're good.
Ordinance seventy-six twenty-four, would someone introduce, please?
I'll introduce it.
And order, and ordinance to authorize continued payments per run for volunteer firefighters. Whereas it has long been the established practice and policy of the city of Nelsonville to provide payments of ten dollars per run to volunteer firefighters with the fire department, up to twenty-five volunteer firefighters. Whereas city council has determined it desirable to authorize continuation of this long established established practice and policy of the city. Whereas volunteer firefighters with the fire department provide a necessary public service to the residents and businesses of the city, service for which the city is grateful and which city council desires to recognize. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby authorizes and approves continuation for a payment of ten dollars for each volunteer firefighter with the fire department for each run for each volunteer firefighter, up to twenty-five volunteer firefighters, while serving and performing duties for the fire department as volunteer firefighter. The fire chief is hereby directed to take any steps in his discretion which are reasonably necessary to indicate to the city's volunteer firefighters the city's appreciation for their continued public service and devotion to the city. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary under law to arrange for appropriations of funds for the payments authorized and directed by council herein. City administration shall take all steps reasonably necessary to ensure this ordinance is included in the next codification of the city's code of ordinances. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Do you agree, acted by council on second reading the twenty-third day of September two thousand twenty-four?
So does this, does this mean this ordinance is going to be also increasing the roster of volunteer firefighters to twenty-five?
I'm not sure what the areas are here to.
Uh, but that would be a staffing ordinance situation, not a.
I don't remember what the staffing number is for the volunteers. It's separate from the part-time firefighters. I don't have a problem paying them ten dollars for them, but I don't get the volunteers got paid.
That's been, that's been on the books for years.
I know, I just don't understand that theory.
My understanding for Taylor is it's been on the books for years. We've been doing it for years, but there's no ordinance or resolution in writing that states that they get to ten dollars.
Okay.
And you just got, they, they talk federal, the audit that he just had.
I got.
And that's, that's why we're having this ordinance. It's not in writing.
What? I mean, it's.
Yeah, if, I mean, if Mr. Lawson's information is correct, um, the way the ordinance was prepared, I just felt too much verbatim of putting out the audit of recommendation and proposal.
They didn't look very hard.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's been on the books.
Ordinance seventy-seven twenty-four, someone introduce, please?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance adopting a procurement policy for the city of Nelsonville for federally funded procurement and project. Whereas federal law regulations require the city of Nelsonville to have in place a procurement policy for federally funded procurement and project for the city of Nelsonville. Whereas therefore the city is in need of a procurement policy that complies with requirements set forth in applicable federal law and regulations. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city hereby adopts the procurement policy attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit A. The provisions and requirements of the city's procurement policy shall apply to any federally funded procurement and or project of the city. Council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time provided by law. Do you agree, acted by council on second reading the twenty-third day of September two thousand twenty-four?
Madam Vice President?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Yes, uh, just one, one quick comment on this. I don't believe this legislation has been considered by finance committee. I do think from, from my understanding, I do think there's a little bit of some urgency to get this procurement policy in place. Currently, the city has the procurement policy, but that only applies to the COVID article federal funds, and there needs to be a procurement policy in place for all federally funded projects and procurements. Um, excuse me, but, uh, my recommendation would be that council follows regular order and allows the finance committee to study this, um, before, before, uh, council enacts it.
Okay.
Ordinance seventy-eight twenty-four, someone introduce, please?
I'll introduce it.
An order to authorize the execution of then announced tickets by the city auditor and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders and declaring it an emergency. Whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section five seven zero five point four on one. section 5705.41d1, the city may not enter any contract or give any order involving the expenditure of money unless there is attached thereto a certificate of the city auditor that the amount required to meet the obligation has been lawfully appropriated for such purpose and is in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of an appropriate, appropriate fund free from any previous encumbrances. And whereas Ohio Revised Code, section 5705.41d1 further provides that in such circumstances when no certificate is furnished as required and the expenditure is for more than $3,000 or more, the city council, as the city's taxing authority, may authorize the drawing of a warrant in payment of amounts due upon such contract or order upon certification by the city auditor that there was at the time of the execution of such a certificate a sufficient sum appropriated for the purpose of such contract in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of an appropriate fund free from any previous encumbrances. And whereas such a certificate of the city auditor is known as a then announced certificate, meaning that the funds were available when the contract was made and when the amount due under the contract was or is paid. Whereas the city is issuing then announced certificates in connection with payments due and owing as shown up on exhibit one as attached. And whereas city council deems it to be in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of the city to approve the execution by the city auditor of then announced certificates and to authorize the payment, um, amount due under the contracts or orders requiring expenditures $3,000 or more. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows, that the city council of the city of Nelsonville, pursuant to section 5705.41d1 of the Ohio Revised Code, hereby approves the execution of then announced certificates by the city auditor and authorizes payments due and owing in accordance with the schedule attached here to as exhibit one and incorporated herein. That it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and in all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to ORC 731.15 and Nelsonville City Charter, section 4.09 through 4.11. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, article four, section 4.09 through 4.11. As an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to pay various outstanding invoices for services rendered to the city is necessary. For the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do you enact my council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the ninth day of September 2024? Motion to suspend.
So moved, second.
I'm sorry, does anyone in the audience have anything to say about this? Thank you.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Motion to a down. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ordinance 7924, would someone introduce, please?
I'll reduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city to render into an agreement with for procurement of the 2024 ortho imagery, three-inch imagery with the Athens County Auditor. Whereas the city of Nelsonville and the Athens County Auditor decided to enter into an agreement for the procurement of the 2024 ortho imagery, three-inch imagery data. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in need of good 2024 ortho imagery, three-inch imagery data for the city's own geographic information system mapping purposes. Whereas through its third-party vendor, the Athens County Auditor is equipped to provide the latest quality 2024 ortho imagery and three-inch imagery data to the city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute and such execution is hereby ratified a memorandum of agreement with the Athens County Auditor for procurement of the 2024 ortho imagery, three-inch imagery data, which memorandum of agreement is attached here to as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Sum of $10,000 is hereby appropriated for payment of the product and data provided as part of the 2024 ortho imagery, three-inch imagery project. City, city auditor shall take such steps reasonably necessary to pay the invoice submitted by the Athens County Auditor to the city. Council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to ORC 731.15 and Nelsonville City Charter, sections 4.09 through 4.11. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, article four, section 4.09 through 4.11. As an emergency in the operation of the city government as services to be provided to the city have already been rendered and payment by the city for those services is due and is, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate any disbursement of funds authorized for this ordinance. Do you enact my council on first reading the ninth day of September 2024 under suspension of the rules?
So, excuse me, we're paying for a service that the county auditor passed? That, that tax, that tax money pays for already? And we're going to write a $10,000 check for something?
Yeah, that's my point.
That's already paid for?
Yeah, so there was an agreement signed, um, in March, uh, March 18th. Uh, the auditor signed it February 20th. Uh, it was signed by the city manager, March 18th. Uh, we were invoiced for it, um, in May. And we had that invoiced since May. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, explains it.
Okay.
Motion to suspend.
So moved, second.
Madam Vice President? Is, is this a, a camera or a gadget or a drone? Or a computer program? What is it?
You know, the county auditor's maps that they use for keeping track of all property bots and stuff? It's that.
That device?
It's a software, a mapping service.
Oh, thank you.
It, it's my understanding also that that deal, the relies on this data for planning, they probably don't know if Mr. Bass is still there to confirm that or not, but that's my understanding.
Yes.
Right away.
Okay.
Do I have to share a minute?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Motion to a down. Second.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thanks for the introduction.
You're welcome.
Ordinance 8024, would someone introduce?
I'll reduce it.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes, yes, Mr. Taliber.
Did you want to move ordinance 8024 until after the vector? Or did you have to discuss that?
Um, well, this is another ordinance I don't believe, actually it probably falls under the jurisdiction of both judiciary and finance committee. I don't believe either committee to study this. This, this is basically, um, if there's language in the charter already authorizing council to do this with respect to competitive bidding for projects, but as far as I can tell in my research, council never actually enacted that, authorized in implementing legislation. It's, it's generally worded, remodeled after the language of the charter, but I do, I do think it would be appropriate for the two committees to have a chance to weigh in on what they believe to be the best way forward. There's no urgency on this. It's just something that I have noticed.
Okay, so we can read it first and then have our committee meeting to discuss it? Before second reading?
Awesome, Cory. Isn't that really covering the charter? The only difference would be the dollar amount? Has the state changed that?
Well, that's, that's what he was just addressing. That doesn't really, this gives a little bit more guideline.
Okay.
If, if, if I may, it, it is kind of a complicated situation and I, I, I would like to explain to the committee so maybe if, Mr. Taliber, if you could tell me when the next committee meetings are there so I could attend?
Okay.
Just to explain it to the ladies?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Need someone to introduce?
An ordinance establishing the circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be required. Whereas section 8.05b1 of the Nelsonville City Charter provides in relevant part, quote, "The council shall by ordinance or resolution provide for the circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be required, including but not limited to the amount of an expenditure to be made pursuant to a contract above which bidding shall be required, contractual expenditures which shall be exempted from the competitive bidding requirement and the procedure to be followed where bidding is required," unquote. Whereas section 8.05b1 of Nelsonville City Charter also provides, quote, "Until the council acts pursuant to subsection B of this section, the general laws of Ohio shall apply with respect to the matters described in this subsection B," unquote. Whereas section 735.05, 731.14 and 731.141 set forth the general law of Ohio with respect to circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be required for municipal corporations within Ohio. Whereas section five, I'm sorry, 8.05a of the Nelsonville City Charter provides in relevant part, quote, "Where a competitive bidding is required pursuant to council's determination under subsection B of this section, the contract shall be awarded to the lowest and best bidder," unquote. Whereas section 8.05b1 also provides, quote, "The council may by ordinance or resolution accept any specific contract or contractual expenditure from bidding requirements which would, under the city's general ordinances or resolution, be subject to bidding," unquote. Whereas there is a need for council to establish by law the circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be provided. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Unless otherwise provided by law, the circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be required shall be the same as the requirements set forth in general Ohio law, specifically section 735.05, 731.14 and 731.141 of the Ohio Revised Code. Unless otherwise provided for by ordinance or resolution of council, the procedures for competitive bidding shall be those procedures established by general Ohio law, specifically section 735.05, 731.14 and 731.141 of the Ohio Revised Code, such that the circumstances in which competitive bidding is required pursuant to the provision of this ordinance and contract shall be awarded to the lowest and best bidder. Where competitive bidding is required pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance and contract shall be awarded to the lowest and best bidder. If council may by ordinance or resolution accept any specific contract or contractual expenditure from the bidding requirements established by this ordinance, which would, under the provisions of this ordinance, be subject to competitive bidding. Council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time provided by law, fully enacted by council on second reading the 23rd day of September 2024. Resolution 2307.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. The resolution accepting the amounts and rates is determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas city council is required by law to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorize the necessary tax levies and certify them to the county auditor for the fiscal year commenced in January 1st, 2025. Whereas the budget commission of Athens County, Ohio has certified its action thereon to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council and what part thereof is without and what part is within the ten mil limitation. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The people of the city of Nelsonville have the right guaranteed them under the Ohio Constitution to choose the form of government for the city. The amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission of Athens County, Ohio and its certification attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit one, including schedules A and B, being are hereby accepted. There be and hereby is levying on the tax duplicate of the city of Nelsonville the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the ten mil limitation as set forth in schedules A and B of exhibit one attached. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and in all deliberations of city council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, fully adopted by council on first reading the ninth day of September 2024.
Motion to a down. Second.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three oh eight. Introduce please.
I'll introduce it.
A resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Nelsonville Community Foundation for new fencing at Nelson Common. Whereas Nelson Commons is in need of upgraded infrastructure, including installation of new fencing. Whereas Nelsonville Community Foundation has funds to award community grants of up to five thousand dollars. Whereas the dog park committee and Mr. Casey Cox have provided invaluable public service in identifying areas of need and providing extensive assistance in preparing a grant application for new fencing at Nelson Common. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. A grant application in the name of the city of Nelsonville is hereby authorized to be submitted to the Nelsonville Community Foundation for an amount of five thousand dollars for new fencing at Nelson Common. City managers hereby authorized to execute any grant agreements as may be necessary for the grant application and receive a grant fund, if any. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt. So moved. Oh, second.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic? Yes.
And I would like to thank Mr. Cox, if I may. He's been a driving force, um, uh, being part of the rec board and he's got really big vision for park improvements and he's really been the driving force behind this. So I wanted to thank him for all that. And he's the main reason why we have this application for this. I just appreciate all of his efforts.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three oh nine, please introduce.
I'll introduce it.
A resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Nelsonville Community Foundation for lighting and sidewalks at Nelson Common. Whereas Nelson Commons is in need of upgraded infrastructure, including lighting and sidewalk construction and or repair. Whereas Nelsonville Community Foundation has funds to award community grants of up to five thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. A grant application in the name of the city of Nelsonville hereby authorized to be submitted to the Nelsonville Community Foundation for an amount of five thousand dollars for lighting and sidewalks at Nelson Common. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute any grant agreements as may be necessary for the grant application and receipt of grant funds, if any. Council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Actually, President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got three of them.
Does this grant include lighting of the shelter there? Do you know? Does anybody know?
It did not.
It did not.
It did not specifically include that.
What about the putting the electric service back at the Veterans Memorial at north end of the park?
I believe Jason's working on that because...
He told me the meter was moved, removed years ago.
It was removed more recently, I believe, is what the issue is.
Okay.
There was one close, I believe it was close to where the trash cans are by the pool and for some reason AEP removed it.
Okay.
They were changing a service related to the health building. There was some, something strange happened and they got moved.
Okay, so AEP should be working on getting that service reestablished.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have the vote. We just want to verify that's the area by the pool.
Yes.
I thought it was the high school, Nelsonville Commons.
There's been a lot of activity, let's just call it activity, at that park and of the adults sort on the roof. They, the other day, they were on the roof of the shelter house.
That's...
I almost stopped, but I'm like, yeah, I don't want to be Mr. Communist citizen then, you know, start yelling at them. But they were on the roof of the shelter house. Just give you a heads up. I think it's called a bit of gravity, kind of vaseline, so they slide off.
Absolutely, it's fine.
See, I was being humane.
Are you talking about the service stopped there by the dumpster pad and everything? That was removed by AEP? That used to go to the ice skating rink.
Yeah, the ice skating rink that we had for one or two years and then they stole all the copper.
That service went straight to that ice skating rink, it's all that service.
Yeah, we had an ice skating rink at one time.
And they stole the copper.
They stole the copper.
But was there service before to that Veterans Memorial?
No.
It has lights on it.
It was...
Its lights are installed there.
That outlet was put there for that purpose, but I think there was another circuit ran to the lights.
There was another separate circuit was put in there for there, to run out there. But as far as a separate service for them before, no, there wasn't. There was, but it was run out to Memorial after the ice skating rink was put in.
Okay, but then it was removed.
They, yes, they removed the ice skating rink.
Well, you said it was run after the ice skating rink was removed.
No, it was... When we, when the panel for the ice skating rink was put in, there was a power feed that ran out to Memorial, probably ice skating rink, from that service.
So was there no...
When they removed...
Was there no lights on that memorial before then?
No, there was not. They were out of it while the ice skating rink was going in.
Well, they kept flying the American flag at night, so...
I know they did. That was one of the reasons why the service was put up there, as I know, because I put it in.
Okay.
So moved. Second. Sorry, I think he just blew over your motion there, Mr. Booth.
It's like, it's all I call for.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three ten. Would you want to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Co-introduce.
A resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for body worn cameras produced by the police department. Whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the state of Ohio set aside ten million dollars to help outfit law enforcement officers across the state with body worn cameras. Whereas the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services is now seeking and requesting proposals for grant application for its body worn camera grant program. Whereas body worn cameras are a necessity for officers of the police department to carry out their duties for which faithful service the city is grateful. Whereas the police department is in need of upgraded and new body worn cameras for its officers. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The police chief is hereby authorized to submit a grant application to the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice in response to his two thousand twenty-four Ohio body worn camera grant program request or proposal in such amount as, in the discretion of the police chief, as appropriate to meet the needs of the police department for body worn cameras for the officers of the police department. City manager is hereby authorized to execute any grant agreements that may be necessary for the grant application and receipt of any grant fund, if any. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Chief slash city manager, is this the original cameras that were purchased? Are these, is that one after the...
We continue to upgrade our cameras. Applying to this grant is actually, so the grant, you can apply for it to either get new cameras or continue maintaining a current program, we prefer helping agencies start new programs. So I'll be applying to get funds to continue our programs, which is slightly modified for them, but...
Your right.
So that means you would continue to do the upgrading, is it...
Yeah, we're going to continue to have our body camera program.
Right.
This is just asking the state to help offset, help offset costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think everyone probably has noticed some of the street signs going up lately, the street signs that we've got. If you happen to notice, there were some type O's. We're aware of most of them, if you see one, let us know and the zones will be fixing those and we'll get the proper ones signed up. Um, it's kind of a work in progress. It's, it's, as they're able to with the time they have. Um, all the paving and frog hollow has been completed. They're working on getting some curbs fixed. They were having issues with the temperature and the asphalt where the weather has changed. They were not setting properly, but the curbs should be finished up in the next couple of weeks in a few areas. Uh, phase four sewer. Phase three water project should be going up to bid in January. We just had our dog swim event at the pool, which is the closing event for the city pool. Dan, let me know that, Dave, if you like, let me know that there were twenty-five dogs that attended the swim. Pretty wild. I don't know that a lot of other places have a dog swim, so, yeah.
That's cool.
I want to take a quick second here to thank Trevor Boggs. You guys remember him? He was the Eagle Scout.
Yes.
At the park. I think they're probably killed. So they finished painting up both of those buildings, the wall. Uh, he also came in and someone had graffiti at the bottom of the pool house.
Yep.
And they painted that up and cleaned it up as well, so we thank them.
Nice.
With council's approval, I think we should probably draft a resolution thanking him in the next meeting. And maybe a ring of black.
We'll talk about it in Parks and Rec. Cool. Thank you.
Uh, your right.
Is there a quick synopsis of what the police department has been noticing around lately?
Yeah, so we've been working on some more felony narcotics cases lately. There's been kind of a lot of our time investigating the... And then we're also trying to spend a little more time doing book though, assisting their mayor on some friction points that they've been having with their community.
I think we're getting another influx of bicycle riders.
Activity.
Definitely, you're starting to pull off a little bit of activity picking up. It's easier for people to stay outside a little, or avoiding, they're not avoiding the heat as much.
Maybe we can volunteer ride to Mex County and drop them off at our fridge deal.
What a great idea.
He loves, you're the owner of White Band. I can drop them.
Okay, for the good of the order. I would like to recognize, uh, Lynn Betty Young, who is the president of Harkene College. Thank you, ma'am. And we'll be getting in touch if you run up the bus, Chappie, and taking the fellow criminals.
Well, that's the, that's the prisons.
Yeah.
Because it's not my business.
Okay.
There's contract up bill and your bus.
Yeah, that's what it was.
You can take to the bus. What do you mean by fellow criminals? What's that supposed to mean?
That's what you said.
I said?
She looked at you and said...
She did, too, yeah.
Did we say that? And also, gentlemen from Knicks, thank you very much for coming in tonight. We appreciate it. And, uh, hot dogs, the Conny's terrific, and I loved the caramel milk today. It was fantastic.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
How's business been for you guys?
Pretty good, pretty good.
Good. Give names to your hat after the meeting. I would just like to thank, um, Mr. Tolliver for filling in at a moment's notice once again. You know, you're unqualified for the position, as our Facebook supervisors say. Um, I'd like to thank Mrs. President Young for attending our meeting tonight. It's nice to see her face in the crowd. And, uh, everybody just, uh... It's nice to see everyone get along and no one chanting or arguing or any of that stuff.
Thank you.
But that, we'll save that for later.
You want to thank me for always being...
I, Sue, you're always thankful.
Cory, he's in your bus.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay.
I want to remind everybody that Wednesday, we're having a, with our fire department holding Memorial for the nine eleven, uh, a terrorist attack. We're looking forward to as many people coming out as possible.
Take the time. Eight, nine, and...
Eight, eight forty-six, I believe, was, is, was when the first, first come in.
Yes.
So individuals need to be, uh, they're out there before the, before that timeframe. So the...
Square.
The...
Square.
The square is being closed off at eight o'clock and they'll be going all day. So, uh, we want to see as many people out there remember nine eleven as possible.
I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to interrupt you. Thank you. Um, but also was brought to my attention by a, a fire department, a local water department, fire department. When are we going to do our Halloween? When you start thinking about that, because I think there's several...
We're doing it on, on Halloween day, the thirty-first.
The thirty-first, okay. It's good, now it's...
Six to seven.
Yeah, I'm a little slow.
That was on Facebook.
It was on Facebook, it sure had been released. But I had that sign, you didn't retain one. I have a lot of these things.
Mr. Booth?
I have nothing, thank you. You look like you just pulled one, that's why you don't hold them.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate the fact that you've set up with me. I was thrown into this just a couple of days ago, so thank you very much for your kindness and I appreciate you being here. And with that, I adjourn at Athens.
It doesn't always vary in agenda.
Yes.
Litigation matters about, uh, a quick update and then also personnel to city attorney contract. You've got five minutes.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize, everyone. We have to have an executive session with someone.
I move we go into executive session under R C one twenty-one dot twenty-two, personnel legal matter. Second.
Where's the party?
Invite in.
Anybody?
We invite in, invite in the, uh, city, active city manager and the city attorney.
Yes, um, Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
It should come out by itself. We should get rich.
Yes.
Down, down by down the nose.
Oh.
It was, it was something else.
Motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
At nine oh five.
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, we gotta wait, we got a roll call.
Oh, I'm, I'm...
All right. Is she coming?
Yeah.
Oh, she's Susan.
Here.
Sorry, we were a little bit too much for her there. It's not, I thought she left.
Yeah.
She's in there talking to Joey. Little creativity. They were, they were top, when I do a fire answer, they were top of the shelter. All right, we're live.
Good.
We're live and here she comes, the one, the only.
Susan.
Susan Harmony, the mayor of Columbus Street.
Oh, that's a good title.
It is, right there, they're the gatekeepers. Sorry, Susan, we already had a motion and a second to come out of, uh, executive. Nancy motioned and... And Scooter right there, second to the... What time?
Nine oh five.
At nine oh five.
Nine oh five. Who's Scooter?
That'd be Cory.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, roll call, is that what you need now?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
I wish to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Note the time.
Nine oh seven.
All right, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good job, you did a...